Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our 7:00 PM session on the January 15, 2019, special meeting of the City Council. I'd like to now ask the clerk to please call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember is Crone.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Matthews.
Vice Mayor Cummings.
Yep.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Thank you. So before we get started, I would like to announce that this is a special meeting, and our topic this evening is to hear from applicants who applied to our various city boards and commissions. No oral communications or discussions on other items will be heard at this time. I'd like to now open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the advisory body interviews?
Excuse me, Mayor, just a quick point of order. Somebody came with an application and evidently is not registered at the address but would like to speak tonight. I don't know what the protocol is on that.
It would be for public comment, then.
Okay.
Address you guys in public comment.
Okay.
So it would be at this time that they could speak? Is that correct? At this time for public comment right now?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's any member who would like to speak for public comment, now would be the time to speak, and you'd be given two minutes. Are there anybody, is there anybody else who would like to speak on public comment? Okay. So I see two folks. Is that correct? Okay. That'd be you, and then after Mr. Norris. And you'll be given two minutes.
Oh, thank you. My name is Alicia Cool, and I did not find out about the opportunity until after the application deadline, so I would like to request that you extend the application period in order to take my application under consideration. I've lived in Santa Cruz for 15 years, on and off. I currently live in my recreational vehicle with my young children and my partner. I feel that I can truly represent a group of marginalized people who rarely get a voice in a lot of these issues. I am involved in a steadily growing number of volunteer activities of my own device, as well as working with groups. Personally, I donate to the Ross Camp. I'm signing up to volunteer for the Warming Shelter. I've been attending Homeless United for Friendship and Freedom meetings, and I also see to the nurture and care of my young children while living in an RV. Over 10 years ago, I did spend time living at the Rublee Shelter. I've spent many years housed, as well as employed. I have a well-rounded perspective that may complement and round out the Parks and Recreation Commissioners' community perspective, so that's what I would like to apply for. I'm well-informed about current local services. I'm familiar with the services that have come and gone in the community over the years. I'm also familiar with the services that we currently have and the services that we currently need. One reason for my interest in serving in the Parks and Rec Commission is that the homeless use the land and services of the Park and Recs. And the Park and Recs has the mainstay over bathrooms and garbage disposal. These are huge issues for the homeless, as well as for the rest of the community, and these are health and safety matters that, as a parent of young children, I'm very concerned about. I look forward to learning more details about the budgets and resources. And...
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Norris?
Members of the community, and City Council, and members of the audience, this is, of course, these advisory commissions, if they don't have a lot of direct power, are important access avenues for the community to use. And I'm particularly concerned with the Parks and Rec. I support the applicant who just came up, because, as you probably know, we've been trying to get Parks and Rec to reopen bathrooms that is locked from the public, except for a limited exclusionary group that uses, let's say, Loudon Nelson, or the people who come here during the City Council meetings, and that time only can use these bathrooms. We need 24-hour bathrooms, of course. We need a whole new, different mentality in this community, and the staff has been not only unresponsive, but directly repressive on these issues. What's needed is a Parks and Rec Commission that is willing to challenge the staff, to go out to the public and find out what the real needs are, not just the nervousness of some neighbors who don't like homeless people and want to put up fences, as was recently done around the Ross Camp, and seems to be the new solution for this City Council, at least working through the staff. I think you need to essentially put people on this board that present a different perspective. I have no illusions that that perspective is going to be a majority perspective initially, but I think that it is important to have it there. And to have it, diversity is a nice catchword. I don't really care about diversity particularly. I'm particularly concerned about the interests of people who don't get represented at all. And a lot of that has to do with the public. The public does not have access to bathrooms at night, except for three porta-potties. And the Parks and Rec Commission, through Carol Skurich, and now through Tony Elliott, have done absolutely nothing about this, as far as I know. The excuse for this is vandalism. We've looked into this. There are very few instances of vandalism, and not such as to justify what's happened, so please consider some people who will review this issue.
Thank you.
And it'd be great if you didn't cut me off in the next few speakers. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Everybody will be given two minutes, so I'll just briefly go over the approach. The way that we'd like to approach the flow of this meeting is to go through the commissions alphabetically, and call the names of the people who indicated that particular, one particular commission as their first choice if they chose multiple. And you will be invited up to the lectern to speak, and I will allow for up to two minutes. We have your applications, so it's an opportunity for you to introduce yourself, so you don't need to take the full two minutes, but you'll have up to two minutes per person to address the council. And if applicants wish to speak to any other commission they applied to, they would be allowed to during their two-minute period, when they're speaking to their preferred appointment. Once you speak, you are welcome to stay and listen to the other applicants, or you're also welcome to leave. As I mentioned, the council members, we've all received your applications, and we've had an opportunity to review them. This is just a chance for us to get to know you and meet you here, and for you to introduce yourself personally, amplify any types of qualifications you'd like us to understand, any type of relevant background information, or other types of motivations. But again, this meeting is primarily informal, but as I said, an opportunity for us to put a face to the name, as we have in your application. I just wanted to let you know that I've heard from two folks in advance who've had scheduling conflicts, and I've allowed for them to start. And so I'd like to first invite Linay Holgers, I'm sorry, Linay Holgers-James to come forward, and I'm hopeful I pronounced your name correctly.
Mayor, before we get going, I want to just clarify, it's my understanding, well, the deadline that was announced for applications to be received was a deadline to be included in the original binder of applications. We have continued to take applications since then, and it's my understanding that applications can continue to be submitted up until the date of our appointment action. Is that your understanding as well?
I don't know. I actually am unclear on that.
It's been past practice.
Okay, well, then I'm assuming, yeah, then I would assume so, but perhaps we can get more clarity and provide it to the person who spoke, who would like to submit their name at this time, and get back to that person.
And any others who...
And any others who may be interested. Thank you for that. Does that sound, you have that? Okay, great. Okay, go ahead. You'll have up to two minutes.
Hi, my name's Linaya Holgers-James, and I own Artisans Downtown. I'm applying for the Downtown Commission, and I, Downtown is the longest relationship I've had in my life. I've worked there since, I started working downtown when I was 16. I also lived downtown for a decade. I lived on Lincoln Street, Elm Street, Riverside Avenue, so it's my stomping grounds, and I feel very passionate about it, and I would love the chance to be a female representative on that commission. I also feel like I can bring, speak to the voices of other retailers downtown, and yeah, I feel nervous going first, so, thank you. I'm trying to think if there's anything else super relevant, but like I said, I'll just reiterate my commitment to downtown and the fact that I have lived in this town my entire life, so I'm here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in serving. Okay. I'd now ask that Anne Simunian, please come up.
Simonson.
Oh, Simonson, pardon me.
Thanks very much. Welcome to the new members of the City Council. Congratulations. I've worked in the movement to end violence against women, and I'm commissioning, I'm hoping to be on the commission for the prevention of violence against women. I've been working on this issue since the 1980s, and helped start Media Watch, which is an organization, a nonprofit here in our community, that works to expose the role that media plays in teaching racism, sexism, and violence as a part of entertainment in our media, and the important intersection of that and how we legitimize that violence through the media. And basically, what we have found over the years is the importance of focusing on the actions that men take, and to work on trying to stop that, and try to, you know, focus as a prevention, preventative measure, to work on, rather than focusing so much on the survivors of violence, is to rethink the whole idea. And I've worked with prominent people across the nation for many years, including Jackson Katz. He has a new film out that I just saw the trailer of this morning, and I'm excited about that. It's called "The Bystander Moment," and it's about how we could take, each and every one of us take responsibility for stopping this violence in the moment, every day, to speak up and to change the paradigm. So anyway, that's something that I would be very much interested in doing, is working on film series, and doing education, working with coaches potentially, different groups that are working with young men in our community, as well as women and young girls, but to really consider the importance of focusing on preventing violence by going to where, to the people that are actually perpetrating the violence, so. Anyway, I've been in town for 40 years. A lot of you may know me, but I'm really happy to put my hat in the ring.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you. Okay, so as I call your name, please line up to speak, and we'll first do the commission that is, which is alphabetically, which is our Arts Commission. So if you please, I'll list the names, and if you could please line up to my left, and I just want to apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name, so please correct me, and our council, if that's the case. So Janoa Faber is our first speaker, and then we'll have Allison Garcia, John Carwin, Marilyn Kushit, Kushit?
Oh.
Okay, thanks. Jania Larenas, Sean Swain McGowan, John Rawls, Mary Tartaro, Owen Thomas, and Maria Krisha Benegas. Benegas. Benegas, thank you. Okay, and those are the folks who would like to speak as potential arts commissioners. So please, one at a time, introduce yourself, and we will be given two minutes. Janoa would be our first. Not here? Allison? Okay.
Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Allison Garcia, and I'm applying for the Arts Commission. I'm a freelance photographer, and I believe you're familiar with some of my work, in particular, the Photography and Interview Project called Black Lives in Santa Cruz: What Matters?, that hung on these chamber walls for a few months through the end of last year. Maybe it's intentional, but I was thinking that it's appropriate to call this place "The Chambers," like the chambers of the heart, because it's the municipal center of our city. I believe art speaks to our hearts, and if that's true, then there are a lot of lovers in this city. Art speaks to our minds and can be very powerful. It speaks to our souls with its beauty. Public art is part of the visual culture of our city. It sends a message to its constituents, residents, visitors, and artists that we value creativity and innovation. But I also know that behind all of that beauty and magic is a lot of hard work. Not just the sweat of the artist, but for the Arts Commission, bringing significant works of art to the public means thoughtful review, thorough analysis, ensuring inclusivity, working with city partners, and crunching numbers. I've had years of relevant experience as a program manager at UCSC, as a board member of the Homeless Garden Project, as a small business owner with clients countywide, and as a producer of an arts event now in its third year. I'm willing to rope up my sleeves to do the work from the heart to support the arts in this city. Thank you for considering my application.
Thank you. All right. Is John Carwin here? Okay.
Evening, council. My name's John Carwin. I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Cruz, except for a 15-year period where I was in Southern California with, earning my master's degree in museum studies. So I spent about 15 years down there in the museum field, and since then have devoted my, the rest of my career, to the commercial side of the arts, which is as a production manager at Bay Photo Lab. So I've had a long series of different responsibilities, both in public and private art institutions, managing programs, and working with people, working with artists directly, and becoming very familiar with art in all different media, and different ways that it can be used to people's benefit, so. Happy to contribute that experience to any work that the commission does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Marilyn.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Cookst. It's so much easier to say than to read.
Thank you for him.
I've been in the Santa Cruz area for a little over 20 years. For a little, well, maybe almost 25 years, I've been a full-time, self-supporting artist with no trust fund subsidy, just all tenacity and hard work. It can be done. You can make a living, although they train you not, but it can be done. It can. I have the requisite lists of exhibitions, and I've had experience with many galleries, public art programs, public art commissions, private, so I know the world of the working artist. My work is collected all over the United States, Europe, and a little bit beyond, so the working artist side I've really got down, I think. In addition, I understand working with small arts organizations. I had three terms as president and manager of the Artist Guild of San Francisco. I too can herd cats. You can also be a member of that organization, you just have to drive a lot up to San Francisco, so I know the small arts organization aspect. I know small business. I was an entrepreneur. I developed, owned, and operated my own small floral business and special display company in San Francisco for a few years. I understand the challenges of entrepreneurs and small business. I understand the challenges, the politics, and managing large corporations. I worked for, I started out many years ago as a project management specialist for Lockheed Missiles and Space. I moved over to the Bank of America in the days when it wasn't quite so embarrassing to be associated with a bank. I had many positions in that organization, but it culminated in being the manager and senior vice president of the Management Services Division.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your interest and your time. Okay, I'd now like to invite up Jania.
My name is Jania Larenas, and I am a longtime artist in the city of Santa Cruz, and founder of the cooperative print studio Little Giant Collective, which is opening downtown next month, and the National Printmaking Movement Print Organized Protest. I'm also a volunteer for Reef Check California, an organization that does underwater ecological surveys through citizen science. As an artist and activist, I am particularly interested in the intersection of politics and art, the space that this intersection creates for community building. My artwork has been featured on The New Yorker and Guardian websites, and the television series Broad City. I have also participated in First Friday events in Santa Cruz for the past eight years. At a recent Arts Commission meeting, I learned about the Storm Drain Murals Project and the draft proposal for the mural at the U2 Water Tank near UCSC. Both are excellent examples of projects that use art as a political intervention for greater community strength. The Storm Drain Project, the Storm Drain Murals Project collaborates with neighbors to create educational artwork on the environmental impact of storm drain runoff, while the draft proposal for the mural at the U2 Water Tank will collaborate with the Amamotzun Tribal Band and the Amamotzun Relearning Project. I spoke with arts program manager Beth Toby about these projects, and was excited to hear her enthusiasm about providing greater visibility to communities like the Amamotzun. When I spoke with the chair Bennett Williamson and vice chair Louise Leong, I learned about their commitment to equity, inclusivity, and environmental justice. I believe that joining this group of committed thinkers and artists is an excellent opportunity for me to help broaden the impact of the City Arts Commission on our community. And after learning more about the commission through conversations with current members, I am extremely enthusiastic about serving the city of Santa Cruz through this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite up Sean.
Hi, my name is Sean McGowan. I'm applying for the Arts Commission. First, I'd like to say thank you for giving us this opportunity. As a quick overview, I have several associate's degrees, a bachelor's degree in economics and art, and a master's degree in digital art and new media. I have been teaching for the past four years at the Graduate Division Program of Digital Art and New Media. And I also work, my nine-to-five is a job with an artist named Jim Campbell. He is most notably known for the Salesforce Tower in San Francisco. Under his oversight, I've had the opportunity to oversee general production management, hardware prototyping, quality control, software development, network administration, budget oversight, and many other aspects. Needless to say, I have a lot of experience on the other side of what the Arts Commission does. Honestly, I don't want to talk about my CV today, I want to talk about what brought me here. My mother is the chair of the Mingay Museum, and on the board of the Coronado Historical Association, and for the past 14 years has been running the Coronado Art Walk. I've had a lot of experience helping her in these various programs. I remember helping, moving around Post-it notes on a map to designate where different artists went in the art walk, helping to design a safe and fun environment for these I've also had the privilege to commit myself to several local organizations, including one called Karma Kana, which is essentially a group of friends coming together, cooking Indian food, giving it away for free, and taking donations so that the money can go towards local organizations, including the Walnut Avenue Women's Center, Homeless Garden Project, Holistic Vets, and more. To sum up, I want to, it's my responsibility to give back to this community, and I would like nothing more than the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite up John. Rawls? Okay. Okay. Mary Tartaro?
Evening, I'm Mary Tartaro. I'm currently serving as vice chair of the Arts Commission, and I'm up for reappointment. I filled in for a former arts commissioner who left early in their term, so I'm here to express my interest in continuing to serve and going on to serve a full term. My experience in art is all, my, all of my experience is in art. It's very extensive. I have a BFA in painting and drawing, and a MFA in sculpture, and my work experience spans from higher education through business and the nonprofit sector. I spent five years as an art therapist, 15 years as a gallery director and founder of an artist cooperative gallery, and was a curator of two different university galleries, Virginia Tech, and most recently San Jose State. I decided a few years back to retire early and enjoy my time in Santa Cruz, and I was looking for an opportunity that would be as rewarding as my 20 years of teaching, and I found that the Arts Commission has really been quite that. It has been, as others have mentioned, that opportunity to give back. I'm done working, I'm no longer a resume builder, so I'm just really looking for opportunity to commit all the full-time, full-time that I have, aside from being a studio artist. And I've curated a number of shows in the areas. I'm on the advisory board for Felix Culpa, and I've worked with Radius and Blitzer Gallery through the Scrap Program, have been involved extensively in different committees on the Arts Commission, starting off gathering information for the rail trail, going on to works with the Arts Council on ebb and flow, and then moving through commissions that I'm, committees that I'm currently serving on, the Scrap Committee, the Artist Residency at the Landfill, and the Mural and Graphic Traffic Committee, and I'm also on Sculpture. So we've got a number of things that we're working on, a number of things that I've seen that we've worked on come into being and come into fruition, which has been really rewarding, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue with all the things that we're working on and seeing what is to come, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite up Owen Thomas.
My name is Owen Thomas. I organize with Students United with Runners. I'm also an art instructor at the Clarity Arts Project. So I was elated when I read the commission's statement announcing its commitment to equity, inclusivity, and environmental justice, because I felt it closely aligned with my intentions in applying. Were I to be selected for the commission, I would approach my position with an awareness of the multiple purposes that art can serve in our community. It can increase material equity and institutional access for disadvantaged groups. It can open up spaces for uncomfortable and important conversations about the major divide and divides in our communities. Most fundamentally, it can be a mode of expression and empowerment. So a commission intent on the just application of artistic leadership must be cognizant of how these multiple purposes can be used to address the disadvantages and gaps in knowledge that persist, and in some cases are worsening in our community. Through strategic partnerships with local organizations seeking similar ends, I believe the Arts Commission can help make Santa Cruz a model for socially just arts programming, and I would be honored to serve this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, lastly, I'd like to invite up Maria.
I actually go by MK.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying. You'll be given two minutes.
The arts are a venue for storytelling, so let me tell you a little story. My name is Maria Krisha, and I come from a working-class background. I'm a first-generation immigrant and college graduate queer of color, and I live to fight social injustices. I believe in sharing my acquired privilege to amplify the voices of those that are not often heard. As an artist, I'm thankful for the Arts Commission. As a Santa Cruz community member, I'm excited to see and hear all the stories about to be told through art. As an activist, I encourage you to take a chance on me due to our shared values. As an artist, activist, immigrant, queer of color, I look forward to contributing to the commission's commitment to equity, exclusivity, and environmental justice from a bottom-up perspective from my own lived experiences. Attending one of the Arts Commission meetings gave me a better understanding of the type of work they do, and I'm here even more dedicated to be part of the team, to be part of the vehicle that tells the stories here in Santa Cruz. And after having spoken many times with Beth and other commission members, I've realized that this is the type of work that I would like to put my focus and commitment on. Having lived here in Santa Cruz for a little more than six years, I've learned to navigate different spaces that are not necessarily made for me, or for people like me. Due to these experiences, I made a commitment to make sure that people of color, immigrants, queers, women, trans, non-binary, the working class, feel included and have access to information, resources, and a community to help us feel welcome, visible, and wanted in this town. I've collaborated with many nonprofit organizations such as the Monarch Services, the MA, the Diversity Center, the Santa Cruz March Organization, and the Walnut Avenue Family Center to create an avenue to move forward with our shared mission. And I wish to be appointed of the Arts Commission to continue creating vehicles.
Thank you. Thank you all for who came to express your interest in serving on our Arts Commission. Up next is the Board of Building and Fire Up next is the Board of Building and Fire Appeals. So I will read the listed names and ask that you please line up to my left. So first, we have Foster Anderson, Gary Fasari, William Kemph, Thomas Kern, Joseph Quigg, and Patrick Spilt. So Foster Anderson. Okay, Gary Fasari. Is it anybody whose name I read?
You do have a late Arts Commission application, apparently.
Okay. Would that be the, did we not add that name to the list, or?
She just turned it in.
Oh, okay, okay. So now we'll invite up the folks who are interested in the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. So will Krishna Likend Williamson line up on my left? And then we'll have Brooke Newman, and we've already heard from Anne Simonton. So Krishna.
Hi, my name is Krishna Likend Williamson, and I'm applying for the Advisory Board for the Prevention Against Women. I'm sorry, for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. I've had some experience with the Walnut Avenue Center. They had the Advocate Volunteer Program for advocates for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, and I did that in 2015. Like, I've learned a lot, and I'm able to contribute to this community. I'm gonna keep this brief. That's, I'm really nervous. That's about it.
Well, thank you for being here. Okay, Brooke Newman, two minutes.
I'm gonna try to keep it brief, too. My name's Brooke Newman. I am currently serving as Chair for the Commission of Prevention of Violence Against Women. It's a mouthful. When I first came to Santa Cruz, it was actually the first job I applied to was to be the coordinator for the CAPFA. I didn't get that job, but then when I saw there was an opening to be on the Commission, I applied for that and was fortunate enough to get appointed. So I've been on since 2015. I've seen a lot of transition happen on that Commission with leadership, with membership. And I'd say in the past two years, we've really kind of come together, and we have interesting projects going. Much like Anne said, we're focused right now very much on prevention and including men in that discussion. We put together the Transforming Together Conference in October, where we are trying to bring the whole community together to have discussions on how we can prevent violence against women and not simply focus on survivors. One thing that I'd like to see through is, if I get reappointed, is a needs assessment that we're conducting, and we've been working with Council and the Community Foundation of Santa Cruz and the Peggy and Jack Baskins Foundation to get additional funding so we can do a countywide needs assessment about what we're doing well in service provision for survivors and preventing violence against women, but also what the gaps are. And I'm also the project manager for the Downtown Streets Team. So I've, in my direct service life, I see the need for women experiencing homelessness and see the gaps that are in services, and I've been bringing that forward to the Commission as well and trying to address that, those issues through this Commission as well. And that's it.
Thank you, Brooke. Thank you. Okay. So now I'd like to invite up those who are seeking to serve on the Downtown Commission. And I will read your name and ask that you please line up to my left. So we have Ryan Althes, Edna Brennan, Ricardo Contreras, Matt Farrell, Brett Garrett, and David Guzman. So if you may, if you can, please line up to my left. Ryan? Is Edna here?
Edna.
Edna, I'm sorry. Edna, pardon me.
Thank you, Council members. You know, it always blows me away when I show up here every four years and listen to the folks that you guys get to put on Commissions. We have incredible people that volunteer here. And I always believe, especially now that I heard all these names called, that it's perfectly okay for me to not be on the Downtown Commission, but I will spend a minute telling you why I think I would be a good candidate. My wife and I, Patrice and I, own the SWF Building where SWF is downtown, so we are business owners downtown. I had a law office downtown for several decades here in Santa Cruz. When I come downtown every day, my wife does as well. We recognize that the downtown of Santa Cruz is the beating heart of Santa Cruz, and it's so important that it be properly presented and represented, and that's why Patrice has been involved with AHA, the American Association of Women Entrepreneurs, which is getting off the ground. The key issue for Downtown Commission is always parking, and I don't pretend to be a parking expert, except I always know a few secret spots to park downtown. So, having said that, when I spoke to Casey Coonerty, who I said that she was choosing not to reapply, she said, you know, it's really all about parking, and there's all this stuff about financing and 10- and 20-year bonds and building projects. And she said, that's not my forte, and I'm not going to pretend to you that that's my forte either, but I have dealt with budgets and the millions of dollars with different organizations that I've been involved with, so I am capable of dealing with that. I know that you have lots of opportunities for other people to appoint, so please feel free to do so. My second choice is Parks and Rec. I know the staff there. I think it's very important that Parks and Rec is now looking at having an ad hoc committee reporting on the homeless situation with regard to the parks, and that's largely because...
Thank you, thank you, for your interest in serving. Is Ricardo here? Matt Farrell?
Good evening, Mayor Watkins and Council members. I currently am finishing my first term on the Downtown Commission and apply, am applying for reappointment. I've worked in transportation for most of my career, having worked for the city of Santa Cruz for 24 years and then for the city of San Jose for six. I have personal experience in commute modes, having ridden the Highway 17 Express for six years while I worked at the city of Santa Cruz, and strong appreciation for alternatives. I received my agenda today for the January Commission meeting, and one of the items that we'll be considering is the Transportation Demand Management Program for the downtown. For the first time in the history of the downtown parking district, there is a $300,000 budget for transportation demand management. And we'll be considering three options at that meeting next Thursday. I think I can make a contribution to that effort, given my career experience and the personal relationship I have with a lot of the stakeholders in downtown, and I would appreciate the opportunity to contribute to that. So thank you very much for your consideration, and I hope you will support my reappointment.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to invite up Brett Garrett, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brett Garrett, and I'm applying for either the Downtown Commission or the Transportation and Public Works Commission. I live here downtown at Walnut Commons, and I'm very passionate about transportation, climate change, and social justice issues. I'm involved with the Santa Cruz Climate Action Network, Santa Cruz PRT, and the Campaign for Sustainable Transportation. I'm keenly aware that transportation decisions and parking decisions have a huge impact on both climate change and social justice. I'm a detail-oriented analytical thinker. My background includes an applied physics degree from Caltech and a PhD in mathematics from UC San Diego. I like to think outside the box, finding creative solutions that can meet the needs of all members of the community. I look for the win-win solutions. Commission members have a tremendous opportunity for creative problem-solving, and I look forward to those opportunities. I believe the city of Santa Cruz has an opportunity to be a pioneer in providing better options than driving a car. It's our obligation to the climate and to the planet. We can modernize public transit to make it more accessible and enjoyable for all. I support bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure. I like riding a bicycle. I love the jump bikes. I support Vision Zero for improved safety. I'm an advocate for expanding public transit instead of building public parking garages and highway lanes, and I strongly support free transit passes for people who work downtown, or better yet, free transit service for all. And my dream is for Santa Cruz to build a solar-powered transit system of convenient podcars, providing a new way to get around town without driving a car. Personal rapid transit would be a quantum step in transit safety and convenience, in addition to being solar-powered and carbon-free. Let's also apply creative thinking to housing and homeless issues. People are sleeping in the streets so close to empty buildings such as the Regal Theater by the, by the river. There's gotta be a way to use those buildings as shelter, and there's gotta be a way to keep bathrooms open.
Thank you, thank you. Is David Guzman here? Okay, so I'd like to now invite up those who are interested in our Historic Preservation Commission. If you could line up to my left, I'll start with Tracy Bliss, Ross Gibson, and then David Sub, I am, forgive me. Okay, Tracy?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Tracy Bliss. My third meeting as a Commissioner, you appointed me in September, was in December, and I got so excited about hopefully being reappointed, because the whole Commission was unanimous that going forward, our number-one priority should be public outreach and awareness. And I feel so strongly about this. I'm a fifth-generation Santa Cruzan. I was an education professor who taught history teachers. My mantra was always, "Make history come alive." But the expertise I bring to this, and the reason why I feel I can, I can make a unique contribution, is I write about historic preservation. I recently wrote the book Santa Cruz is Seabright, thanks to Donna's help and others. And in that, I focused on dozens of historic structures that are on the Historic Building Survey. I'm particularly interested in repurposing, like the wonderful example of the cannery and how fantastically that has been repurposed. I'm currently writing the book on the history of Evergreen Cemetery, probably our oldest historic structure. And I feel that combination of where the Commission wants to go and my particular passion for writing about the people and the structures that are our legacy is just a wonderful fit for what I'd like to contribute.
Thank you. Thank you. Is Ross Gibson here?
Hello, I'm Ross Gibson. I'm a Santa Cruz historian and native of Santa Cruz, but I lived all over Northern California and then came back to town to go to college and completely rediscovered my hometown as a historian. It's such a wonderful thing to be a historic architectural consultant, because you take anonymous buildings and put a name on it and put people in it and start to rediscover things that have been before your face all these, all these years, suddenly take on a new significance or a new enlightened perspective. I've done a number of historic architectural consulting reports. At the time of the 1989 earthquake, I got involved in city sub-commissions to help design or develop downtown guidelines or waterfront guidelines. So I love Santa Cruz, and I love seeing it as a historian, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is David here? Okay, now we'll hear from those who are interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission. So if you can, please line up to my left as I read your name. John Bono, Justin Burks, Deborah Christie, Maggie Duncan Merrill, Ron Goodman, Julian Greensite, Alteria Hatton, Sky Quinn, Bill Rato, Don Scott Norris. So first, we'll hear from John.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins, Council members. My name is John Bono. I'm applying for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I am currently a university administrator in the library at UC Santa Cruz. In that role, I oversee the library's budget, including its revenue operations. I also have oversight of the library's public buildings. I've been a city resident for 18 years, and during that time, I've lived right across the street from University Terrace Park, where I've kind of daily had exposure to the multitude of users in that park and the dedication of Parks and Recreation staff and maintaining it. I just recently attended a Parks Commission meeting and was most impressed by the Commission members and their clear preparation, their respect for the speakers, and their work with city staff. I think I could, I could meet that standard and contribute in meaningful ways to the Commission, and I really see this as an extension of my volunteer service. So thank you for your consideration. I hope you'll select me.
Thank you. Justin?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Watkins and fellow Council members. My name is Justin Burks, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to showcase while, how I'd be an effective Parks and Recreation Commissioner. As a water conservation specialist for our premier water resources management agency, I've helped Santa Clara County Parks save millions of gallons of water through incentives and educational resources that are available for them through the programs I manage, through community workshops, through the dozens of community workshops that I've coordinated and held. I've promoted graywater adoption throughout the county, and through those efforts, I strategically collected and analyzed appropriate types of qualitative and quantitative data to identify the types of barriers that preclude people from making what are ultimately cost-effective and sustainable landscape practices. And I think that that's something that I could really, an approach that I could leverage on the Parks Recreation Commission. Currently, I'm partnering with the Ecology, with Ecology Action to hold the first direct installation program to install graywater systems. This will be the first in Northern California ever, and I'm really looking forward to working with them further on that. My passion and expertise goes beyond water conservation, whether it's using the Riverwalk Parkway or Arana Gulch to ride my bike or walk with my partner throughout the community. Those types of park services really link people to nature that's around us and help make impacts of climate change real. And I think that Parks and Recreation Commission has a leadership opportunity to leverage that type of connection and showcase the types of services that the city has available for people. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you very much. Okay, Deborah Christie?
Hello, my name is Deborah Christie. I am a teacher in Santa Cruz County since 1981. I have been a homeowner at the same home right up the hill from Arana Gulch since 1985. And I have prior experience, so I'm applying for both the Commission for the Domestic Violence that long-complicated, that I should have memorized, and so, and Parks and Rec. I was a Commissioner on the Women's Commission. I did volunteer, I was trained and volunteered to work at the Safe House Shelter locally. When I was on the Women's Commission, they elected me to be trained with Emily's List because I wanted a future as a politician or some kind of a leader, but figured that I'd just keep leading my students until I retire soon. I got an AAUW grant, Association for the Advancement of Women, to attend UC Berkeley's post-baccalaureate certification and writing program, as well as take journalism classes through UC Berkeley so that I could... through UC Berkeley so that I could write from multiple of women's voices in, you know, feature articles. And I am currently working on one in a nonfiction book right now. Because I live right up the Gulch, where if there was a fire down at the encampment on Capitola Road, it would sweep right up the hill to my home. So I've been very actively walking Arana Gulch, as well as Pogonip, and talking to the wonderful folks that work for the Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Debra. Thank you very much. Is Maggie Duncan Merrill here? Okay, how about Ron Goodman?
Hi there. My name is Ron Goodman. I care deeply about our parks and our recreation programs. It's a big part of why I live here. As a runner, I've explored pretty much every nook of our Parks and Green Belt. My whole family has benefited from most every aspect of our parks, or farks, and I want to help them to keep improving. Let me give you a little of my background. I've served on the city's Mission Street Widening Task Force. I drafted the text of our current city's bike parking ordinance. I directed people powers advocacy for the Arana Gulch Bike Path for over 10 years. I founded and directed the Run by the Sea Fundraiser Run, which goes through a state park, but which raised over $50,000 for the rail trail and for various bicycle projects. I've worked at UCSE's Recreation Program for almost three decades as a scuba instructor. And I've served on local boards such as Bike Santa Cruz County, Native Animal Rescue, and I'm also a Save Our Shore Sanctuary Steward. I strive to consider all perspectives and remain open-minded, and I'm willing to consider challenging projects. So I'll bring one up right now. For example, on Segment 7 of the rail trail west of Swift Street, there's an existing ad hoc trail. It's frequently used as a campsite, and I've walked the trail almost daily, collecting hundreds of pounds of trash. And when I do, I talk to campers because I want to get to know the people who are there because they're human beings and I want to know who they are. And oftentimes, I've asked them, "What would make you want to, you know, help you to take care of this place better?" Because I believe that while homelessness isn't a crime, that doesn't mean that we should litter if we're going to be there. And so I've had conversations, and they've said things like, "Well, how about trashcans at the intersections?" It seems kind of obvious, but if there's problems with it, I understand that it's more complex than that. I also know this area because I use it as an alternate bike route because my kids and a lot of kids use it to get to Pacific Collegiate School, where the alternate route is Mission Street Extension, where this year, we had an accident.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to now invite up Julian Greenside, please.
Mayor Watkins, council members, Julian Greenside. I've long been wanting to be on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and in fact, I applied many years ago. Rosemary recalls that. And unfortunately, my application wasn't valid because I was not a citizen. And for many of the commissions, you have to be a citizen. Well, fairly recently, I applied to be a citizen, and I was accepted. So now I can apply for the commission where my heart and passion lies. When I first came to Santa Cruz, and my son was small, and then he grew up, you know, into six, seven, eight, nine, as they tend to, we took advantage of the wonderful programs in the Recreation Department, not only Junior Guards, but the Junior Theater, et cetera. And so I value that aspect of Parks and Recreation very deeply. Did get a bit of sticker shock recently. I'm very close to a family, and they have three children interested in martial arts. Too expensive. They've been here for 28 years. They happen to be Spanish-speaking. Said, "Have you heard of Parks and Recreation?" Never heard of it. Said, "Let me get a booklet." I did, and the prices were so high that they couldn't afford it. I know they're scholarships, but I'd be interested in making our programs perhaps better known, more accessible. I see time's running out. I've helped moms of Meter Street make the park up there safer for children. Pretty well-known for being an advocate for saving our big trees. And I'm proud to say that I have a good rapport with Leslie Keedy. When I was a certified California naturalist, Leslie asked me to lead a walk in Moore Creek Uplands. That freaked me out a bit. Plants are not my specialty, but I raise that just because I think I have a good rapport.
Thank you, Julian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll stop there.
I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly. Altera Hatton? Forgive me.
Altera.
Altera, okay. I thought I said Altera the first time, and then I thought I was wrong, so I'm sorry.
Can all of you see me over here? I'm kind of tucked in the corner.
Thank you.
Is it on? Okay, great. So, hi, City Council. My name is Altera Hatton. I work as a mediator. I'm completing my master's in conflict resolution. As a mediator, I excel at group communication, problem-solving, and creating common ground. I see this opportunity to serve Santa Cruz as a melding of my skills and my interests. I'm an outdoor enthusiast with three dogs and avid explorer of the parks and wild spaces of my adopted home. I hike, camp, and use the bike trails. One of my dogs is a retired service dog, a Belgian Malinois. And if you know that breed, you'll know how many hours a week I spend out in your parks. I have lived around the world, including Argentina, the Caribbean, Switzerland, and the Netherlands. In every country, I've actively explored, observed parks, wild spaces, and trails. I often consider how different regions and countries integrate their use of urban and wild spaces, and which practices serve both best. I believe our parks are for all members of Santa Cruz County, whether they are housed or unhoused. I hope to find common ground on those issues. As a frequent speaker on disability access, I have presented and collaborated on the issue of city planning for pedestrian use, and this includes planning green spaces, paths, and car-free zones. So I've been thinking about the best use of traffic flows and mingling of walkers, joggers, wheelchair users, and bicyclists for years. As a professional communications facilitator, I understand process, rules of order, and prioritization. I have served as treasurer of a national nonprofit, and I am fluent in budgets, bequeaths, and donation law. I may be a bit strange, actually, because I like reading budgets. I currently serve on a few committees for the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Monterey Peninsula, where my wife works as a music director. I also serve on the International Finance Committee of Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. I don't foresee either of those obligations acting as a conflict of interest. As a relative newcomer to Santa Cruz, I'm excited to learn more about our city's structure, politics, and governance. I see this advisory board as a great way to get my toes wet. Lastly, as a woman with significant physical variance, I offer a perspective derived from a set of life experiences. I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much for applying. Thank you. I'd like to invite up Sky Quinn. Is Sky Quinn here? How about Bill Ratto?
My name's Bill Ratto, and I'm applying for the Parks Commission because I love the parks. I'm recently retired from the county of Santa Cruz. For 29 years, I was the parks supervisor, South County. I live in the city, raised my family here, and there's some amazing people here. And that's what I love about this city. Very diverse, and I'm just a grunt. So, you know, I've written budgets. Parks are for everyone. And what we found out is that the more people that use them, the better it is for all of us. And that's how we get our funding. And with the city of Santa Cruz, parks are amazing. I've been using them all my life. I just want to be, if I could help. It's one of those things, is one of my passions in life, is to be a volunteer. I'm a lifelong public servant. I've been in this line of work since I've been, oh, 18. I joined the Marine Corps when I was 18, so I'm from the Bay Area. Not something a lot of us do. But anyway, I could tell you all the experience I have, but I don't want to get into that. But that's why... I just saw the ad, and I go, "Hey, that'd be cool. Maybe I could help. I could be part of, or be proactive instead of react." And I know all the issues. But I think as a team went, as different departments collaborate, it's amazing that we can get stuff done. But I'm just here as a grunt, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
And then lastly, I'll invite up Don Scott Norris.
Good evening. I am a 30-year resident of Santa Cruz and a retired educator who loves hiking and has used the Parks and Rec programs many times. I've worked with many populations as an educator: migrant, at-risk, severely handicapped, gifted, and the blind. I was also successful, not only with students, but with the parents. And believe me, if you know anything about the gifted students' parents, you will understand my comment there. I also developed a lot of innovative curriculum. One of the things we did is that I... We were very close to Corcoran Lagoon, and I developed curriculum about that. And the kids would go out with their clipboards, and we would do that for about a month and take readings and all that. So I'm very interested in bringing that kind of energy to the parks, that we can do anything that we stick, you know, we put our minds to. I'm noticing I'm running out of time. I would like the parks to be safe and welcoming. I believe I have many personality traits that are well-suited for working on this commission. I have excellent interpersonal skills. I also have good communication skills. I think out of the box. And I believe that bringing transparency and inclusion to the process always works. I believe I possess attributes and qualities necessary to do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, so that then concludes the presentations on those interested in Parks and Recreation. I'd next like to invite up those who are interested in planning and serving on our Planning Commission. If you could line up to my left, beginning with Anna Marie Costa, Rena Dubin, Renee Goldar, Miriam Greenberg, Zav Hirschfield, Ron Pomerantz, Mark Primack, Andy Shifrin, William Schultz, and Michael Sylvie. Anna?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Anna Marie Costa, and I am applying for a vacancy on the Planning Commission. I moved to Santa Cruz in July of last year when I purchased my first home. I chose to move here because Santa Cruz, to me, has everything I'd want for a place I'd like to start my family: a passionate, friendly, tight-knit community that values history and preservation, as well as the diverse views of its citizens. Because I intend to stay and start my family here, I have a vested interest in the future of this city and would welcome the opportunity to help shape it through long-term and strategic planning. I'm no stranger to the rules that govern committee meetings. I led the Student Senate as vice president of the student body in my undergraduate years, and I currently sit on the Board of Directors of a federally qualified nonprofit health center, where we just completed a three-year strategic plan. I have a long history of volunteering in my communities, be it through coaching soccer with AYSO or helping to ensure ballots were counted appropriately at last year's local election clerk last year. My interest in civic involvement also led me to pursue a master's degree in public policy and administration. I'm currently halfway through the program and look forward to putting the things I've learned into practice. My professional background is in finance and accounting. I started my career at PricewaterhouseCoopers and then moved on to Google, where I've been for the last five years. I've overseen the accounting for Google's office buildings construction, as well as its global fleet of data centers. On a daily basis, I act as a consultant for the planners and construction teams and partner with them to ensure that all construction-related activities are executed in a compliant manner and are in the company's best interest. I believe my construction accounting background, my public policy learning, and my volunteering passion make me an excellent fit for this advisory board. While I am a new member to this community, I hope to be of service to it for a long time. I'm eager to be involved in any way that I can, and I have also indicated my interest in the Arts Commission and the Commission for Protection of Violence Against Women. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rena Dubin? Rena Dubin? No? Renee Goldar?
Hi, good evening, and thank you. My name is Miriam Greenberg, and I am an urban sociology professor at UC Santa Cruz. And I've had a longstanding scholarly and professional interest in urban and environmental planning and policy, particularly in the area of urban sustainability, with an emphasis on linking equity, ecology, and economics. I have taught classes, conducted research, published articles and books, hosted conferences in these areas. I think that, you know, my being up-to-date on literatures and best practices in critical approaches to urban sustainability could be relevant to the Planning Commission, and this includes in areas such as the production and preservation of affordable housing, transit-oriented development, post-disaster redevelopment, resiliency planning and sustainable design, and innovative approaches to land use and planning. While I've studied national and international cases, I have also researched these issues and ideas locally and regionally, including through my course, EcoMetropolis, my research projects, Critical Sustainability, and the Democratizing the Green City Conferences organized at UC Santa Cruz and New York University, as well as the recent No Place Like Home project with Mike OPI, Steve McKay. And through that, also got to know and interview a number of people on the Planning Commission, while recognizing the considerable challenges our city and region face in a time of intensifying climate change and sea level rise, as well as a housing crisis. In some ways, I see this as particular to Santa Cruz, and in others, very much linked to issues facing our region, California, and beyond. And so I see this as a unique moment of opportunity and of movement. In this regard, I'm inspired by the thoughtful and proactive efforts of our planners, council and supervisors over decades, as well as, most recently, kind of really amplified public engagement on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is Zav here? Zav Hirschfield? No? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I am Ron Pomerantz. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm a UCSE student who was fortunate enough to stay in town, raise a wonderful family as a San Jose firefighter. I've been an observer as well as active participant in many city developments. Recently, several large developments have been approved with accommodations to developers that didn't take into account the values of our community, showing marginal interest in working with effective community members and neighborhoods. The current Planning Commission reflects the belief that real estate and development interests should dominate planning. The Planning Commission must represent much broader interests, concerns, and ideas, which is why I'm requesting your appointment tonight. The Planning Commission should be a place where community values are expressed, a forum that influences the look and feel and composition of our community, a place where Santa Cruz's diverse needs and interests are represented and a part of the decision-making process. I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but I have some knowledge of the general plan, development issues, and concerns, which include financial, social, environmental, health, and neighborhood implications, as well as public benefits that need, that must be protected. As you're aware, I'm a strong proponent of Measure O and inclusionary housing. I'm a commissioner on the Santa Cruz County Housing Authority. I've previously served on the Water Commission, as well as Transportation Public Works Commission. As on those commissions, I will be open and transparent with all community members and treat everyone with dignity and respect. I will diligently and thoroughly study agenda packets. I will ask questions. I will bring community concerns. I will follow all city policies and guidelines aware that I serve at the pleasure of you, the council. I would be honored to serve on the Planning Commission. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, Mark Primack?
Good evening. I'm no stranger to this room, but I did want to come down tonight and show my appreciation and respect for the process that you have here. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, otherwise, I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Andy Shifrin. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. You have my application, so I'm not going to go through everything. I'll summarize a couple of parts of it. I have a master's in city planning, and I teach classes that are called Environmental Assessment. They include California, focus on the California Environmental Quality Act, and the California Planning Law. So I'm very familiar with work, and I've worked for many years around the around the Landry's Development Process in California and particularly the environmental protection laws. I'm applying for the council, for the Planning Commission because of my concern about the, what seems to me to be a lack of a commitment on the part of the Planning Commission to the city's inclusionary housing requirements and policies. And I think it's important to have a voice on the commission that understands the policies, understands the history, and has a strong commitment to carrying out that policy of requiring meaningful inclusion of affordable housing in all housing developments of a larger size. I support multifamily housing in the downtown area. I'm concerned about multifamily housing in around single-family neighborhoods and in the transition area of the, of the, transition areas of the city like Gulf Club Drive and Ocean Street Extension. I want to be clear about my biases. I'm going to bring them to the commission. And I think that it's important for there to be an effective voice, and I think my voice can be effective, for affordable housing on the commission. Since this is an interview process, I'm happy to answer any questions and give you a chance to interview me.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
This is our, this is our chance to hear from you, so we'll just listen tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to now invite up William Schultz.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Bill Schultz. I'm applying for the Planning Commission and also the Historic Preservation Commission and also the Water Commission. I'm a small business owner, and I've made payroll here in Santa Cruz for the past 40 years or so. My company has built dozens of homes, many restaurants, and quite a few commercial projects, not only here in the city, but also in the county of Santa Cruz. I think if you were to ask around in the building community, in the business community, ask of people that know me, I think people would probably tell you that I'm an honest and fair guy. I also pay my bills on time. I think I'm the kind of guy that could give you honest, unbiased advice on the projects before you. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. And Micah Sylvie?
Thanks, Mayor. You got it right the second time. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. Welcome, new members. My name is Micah Sylvie. I am applying for the Planning Commission because I care about the city and also I think that I could be of great value to you all in that role. I'm an environmental engineer, and in the last 10 years or so, I've been working with the U.S. Green Building Council. It's a nonprofit that, whose vision is that buildings, communities, and cities will revitalize and sustain all life within a generation. It's a, it's a very large and lofty goal, but essentially, we try to, our, our aim is really to sort of transform the built environment in any way we can. We're probably best known for our LEED Green Building Rating System. You guys may know it. It's the sort of most dominant green building rating system in the world. But we have a number of other programs, too, that advance sustainability and social equity goals that we have. So we have programs that look at sustainable transportation, add zero waste and circular economy, at health and well-being within buildings, and a whole bunch of other things, including microgrids and everything else. We even have a LEED for Cities program that your director, Planning Director, asked me about a few days ago. But my role with that organization is to oversee the global certification services. And in that role, I get to talk to a lot of amazing people, but I also get to see a lot of amazing projects, everything from a new home to a brand-new city, like some of the new cities that are going up in Asia these days. But that's my work, and this is my home. And I really like the opportunity to provide a little bit more back to the community that I love. I'm currently on the board for New Way Homes. Hopefully, you guys know that nonprofit that seeks to advance housing affordability in the area. If you don't know about it, Sibley Simon will be down here talking to you about his new investment model, which is--
Thank you, Micah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. So now we will hear from those who are interested in serving on our Sisters Cities Committee. I'd like to invite up Marta Beckwith, Shonda Duffy, Dennis Etler, Sarah Coleman, Andrea, Andre Kiktev, Inabel Tenser, and Anita Wood. Marta? Thank you. We'll start with you.
I'm sorry.
Let her adjust.
Hi, my name is Marta Beckwith. I've lived in Santa Cruz for about 20 years, not including the four years that I was at UC Santa Cruz. I'm very interested in youth issues and youth programs. I have three children, two of them in high school and one of them still in elementary school. I'm a CASA, a court-appointed special advocate working with foster youth. And I still am involved with my former foster child, who's now 18 and living in Southern California. I've traveled extensively, both for work and pleasure. I've managed projects in Korea, Japan, Taiwan, the United Kingdom, and Germany. And I've traveled in Central America, North America, and Europe. My husband is a Kiwi, and we've spent a great deal of time in New Zealand. I first heard about the Sisters City Committee and the work that it does through my daughter, who was interested in applying to go on one of the youth programs. It didn't work out for her, but one of her friends went on it, and we heard about the great experiences that they had. I think it would be a great merger of both my interest in youth programs and my interest in travel. I think travel brings people together, and it is important to get other perspectives. If I was appointed, I would focus on the youth programs and broadening those and strengthening business and community ties between Santa Cruz and its sister cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Shonda Duffy here?
Mayor Watkins and City Council members, thank you for meeting with me tonight and providing this opportunity. I've been active with the Shingu Sister City Subcommittee as a volunteer for about three and a half years. I've had the pleasure of traveling to Japan, to Shingu, twice. At the original behest of Cynthia Matthews, who I knew through Visit Santa Cruz County when I worked there before, she encouraged me to apply for a homestay in Shingu, and I connected with the family there. Was also, became involved with the Sisters City Subcommittee after that trip through violent, preparing presentations through Visit Santa Cruz County about tourism in Santa Cruz, and then actively became involved in the Sisters City Subcommittee from thereafter. I had also the experience of going to Shingu the second time with the mayoral delegation when Cynthia Chase was mayor back in 2016. And I'm happy to expand to the other Sisters City programs. I'm encouraged by the, the new involvement in Sestry, the new enthusiasm with Sestry, becoming more involved with Sisters City program and look forward to serving in that respect as well. I wanted to let you know that I brought updated applications. Unfortunately, I thought I had sent them to you earlier, but they didn't go through via email, so I have copies that I'll leave here with Rosemary. And thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is Dennis here?
Hi, and thank the council for having this opportunity to serve. My name's Dennis Etler. I'm a retired anthropology instructor from Cabrillo College. Taught there for nearly 20 years. Been a resident of Santa Cruz and Vicinity for the last 25 years. I've had a lifelong interest in establishing people-to-people relationships. My focus has primarily been with China. I studied Chinese as a graduate student back in the '70s. Went on to become a chairperson of the U.S.-China People's Friendship Association in Milwaukee in the '70s. Then went on to study for my doctorate degree in anthropology at UC Berkeley in the '80s and '90s, and my research was done in China. I was very instrumental in establishing exchange relationships with Chinese scholars and scientists in my field of study, which was Pele anthropology. Subsequent to receiving my doctorate, I moved to Santa Cruz in the mid-'90s and was at Five Branches Institute, now Five Branches University, for a period of five years before going on to Cabrillo. Five Branches, as you may know, is a school of traditional Chinese medicine. So I've been involved with China my entire adult life. I'm also been quite involved with the local chapter of the United Nations Association, serving on the board, and now as acting president. And establishing people-to-people relations with countries such as China is extremely important for me.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you very much. Okay. Is Sarah Coleman here?
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Andre Kiktev. I have been in Santa Cruz for over 20 years now, and I was with the Sisters Cities Committee unofficially for about over 15 now. I have assisted in general events like cultural fairs and stuff like that, but mainly, I was involved with the Alusha Subcommittee. Since I'm fluent in Russian, I have went as part of a delegation, both as a translator and as a band member to Alusha before. And since then, I was acting as translator and occasionally substitute organizer and IT guy for the various Skype conferences that they had and similar events over the years. I have also, prior to being in Santa Cruz, have visited Japan, and I have slight working knowledge of Japanese, so that, and some understanding there. If that will be relevant, considering the various sister cities that the committee has. And I believe that this experience would be of benefit to the community, and I look forward to being able to help in any way I can there, should I be given the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is Inabel Tenser here?
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity. I got to know about the Sisters Committee through my children. Both of them had the great and unique chance to go to Shingu. And Leo went during the spring, and both of them had incredible experiences. And I thought that thanks to Santa Cruz, my children had that opportunity, and I felt that I needed to give back. And I started being involved in the Subcommittee, the SST Subcommittee, since I'm fluent in Italian. And so I've been helping with Luca, the council member, when he came to visit, and that was a great experience. And I'm really looking forward to be on that committee. My experience, I worked at the United Nations. I was a lawyer in Geneva for a couple of years before moving to Santa Cruz. I've been led to working to the United Nations through my experiences with Sisters City. Where I grew up, it was a little town in France, and that little town had two sister cities. And by having these exchanges, that really opened a new world for me, a new world that I really wanted to share with my children and hope with many other youth here in Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Anita Wood.
Evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Anita Wood. I am a new member of the Santa Cruz community. Only been here about four years. And since the time I've been here, I've been involved with, I taught GED at the jail. I've been a substitute teacher and a grant writer for various nonprofits. My profession, though, is, is an anthropologist. I'm also, also an anthropologist. And I have, have been interested in diverse cultures or in different cultures all my life, from the time I was a young child with visitors in our home. I raised a family in Flagstaff, Arizona, and was elected to the Flagstaff City Council where I served for four years. And we had a sister city, Ching-Chien, in Taiwan. And we had a very enlightened government. Set us there as a delegation of about 10 people. And it was, and they came to visit us in Flagstaff. So I know that, that connection, how important it is for developing understanding between cultures. After raising my family, I received a PhD in anthropology at the University of Arizona and received full right to conduct my dissertation research in Mexico. I studied the offshore shrimping industry. And after I graduated, I, my brother and I started a seafood processing plant in Mexico, which we operated for about, about three years. My, my work as an anthropologist has been quite varied. I've worked with migrant farmworkers and traveled with them and lived in migrant camps. I've worked with homeless adolescents in Arizona and as a, 10 years as a grant writer and project manager on wellness projects on the U.S.-Mexican border. I'm interested in becoming more involved in the community and something besides kids and whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. So that then concludes the Sisters Cities Committee interest. So next is the Transportation and Public Works Commission. If you can, please line up on my left. We have Dana Bagshaw, Philip Butel, Sean Orgel Olsen, Bruce Sahil, and Steve Schnarr.
Good evening. I'm Dana Bagshaw, and it's great to be here before you. Seeing new faces on the council. I've been in this spot several times through past council sessions and mostly talking about climate change and transportation, which are my two passions. I see this, being on this commission as an opportunity to get closer to the action, so to speak. I'm very excited about the fact that we've just passed a climate action resolution and making it a priority in our city. It's time to embrace that and mitigate climate change. So I think one of the ways that we can do this is through the budget. And I was pleased to see that that's one of the responsibilities of the commission, is to go over the budget with the city and set our priorities. I mean, money says how, you know, what we think about things. And so I embrace that opportunity. Transportation, for me, well, I walk, I ride my bike, and I use the bus when I can. And I founded the local group of Bus by Point, Bus by Choice. I did a presentation before you, earlier, about buses in Boulder, and I feel like that that would be a great model for what we can do here. We need to find ways to make busing more attractive, more viable, to get people to, to find new ways to move people in, and towards the city. Professionally, I just want to add to the things I put on my application that I, towards the end of my career--
Thank you. You know, send us an email. I try to be consistent because I want to be really fair with everybody having their time. So thank you. But you're welcome to reach out to us before next Tuesday. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And then, next we have Philip Butel.
Good evening, Mayor Watkins, Vice Mayor Cummings, and Council members. My name is Philip Butel, and I'm here to ask that you reappoint me to serve on the Transportation and Public Works Commission for another term, my second term. I work as an engineer at UCSE, and my wife, Megan Caspers, is a math instructor at Cabrillo. We have three kids aged 3, 6, and 10. And I've still somehow managed to attend almost every commission meeting over the last four years. That's somehow, that means my wife. She's awesome. But I first volunteered to serve on this commission as a parent concerned about the safety of my kids, knowing firsthand how difficult it was for them to bike from our Seabright home to our favorite places, whether that was school at Galt Elementary, downtown for a treat, or to visit their two grandmas who live in the house I grew up in, just up the hill on Walnut Avenue. As a commissioner, I tried to prioritize the needs of children and other hypothetical future cyclists and active transportation users. And by that, I mean those who don't ride a bike now, but they would for sure. And by that, I mean those who don't ride a bike now, but they would for short trips around town if it was safer. In my experience, perhaps the most difficult part of being commissioner is navigating the relationship between the commission and staff. Our role as commissioners is to advise you on projects and issues, but I find it's a fine line to walk if that advice is at odds with staff recommendations. And as someone in my time there who has pushed back against staff, I've also been able to find that it's really finding, it's about finding a point of compromise to move forward together and recognizing that if you don't get some level of staff support, excuse me, a project won't ever be successful, even if it gets commission and council votes. Some of the highlights of my term include creating the ATP as part of the ATP Waring Group, Active Transportation Plan, updating the Jump Bike Share Program, reviewing the annual CIP, measured allocations. I serve on the LRDP, Transportation Work Group at UC SE, and approved plans for the rail trail. But really, what I'm most proud of is this last year, I was elected chair, a position I've really enjoyed there. And as chair, I brought Vision Zero to the commission. We spent six months working on it, and if I'm reappointed, then sometime next month, I'll come back and speak to you again.
Thank you, Philip. Thank you, Philip. Okay. Is Sean here? Sean? No?
He presented at once.
I'm sorry?
He presented for Arts Commission, so.
Oh, okay. Forgive me. And how about Bruce?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bruce Sahill. I'm an entrepreneur and scientist. My academic background, I have a doctorate in theoretical physics and an undergraduate degree in music. So playing Bach and pipe organs in cathedrals and studying the first nanonanon nanosecond of the universe clearly prepares me for transportation. There must be something about Santa Cruz, because there's something in the water that makes people political. I was never political at all until I came to Santa Cruz, since a high school class president. But about the time I came here 16 years ago, I was involved in starting up a transportation company called Dayjet, which was a per-seat-on-demand air transportation company that did short trips a few hundred miles in very small business jets, about six passengers. In modern language, you'd call it Uber Pool for jets. And it made me think about appropriate transportation. What is required to make transportation work, and how do people choose it? And I realized it could be applied to many situations. I also learned about interacting with government. We had to change federal and state laws for Dayjet to work. Well, when I got here, somehow I got involved in acquiring the rail line, and I eventually became chair of the Friends of the Rail and Trail and led the effort to acquire the rail line, which was successful as of 2012. So I'm no stranger to consensus and persuasion and conflict. The rail line gives us all something to talk about, at the very least. So transportation unifies and divides people, and the devil is in the details. And I believe that my background in negotiation, consensus-building, and understanding the, how people make transportation choices could be very valuable, and I'd be honored to serve on the committee. You have 15 seconds left. Use them wisely.
Thank you. Okay. And then lastly, we have Steve Schnar.
Just to confirm, Sean, who's listed as Transportation and Public Works, is different. Sean, that he only applied for Transportation and Public Works. Just to not to confuse you.
I don't think Sean is here either, right? And how about Steve? Steve Schnar? No. Okay. So lastly, we have those interested in serving on our Water Commission, and that would be Lynn Bea, Linda Cover, and Sierra Ryan. Is Lynn here? Linda? Okay. You'll be first. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome to all the new people. My name is Linda Cover. I'm a resident at the Tannery Arts Center. I look through things as an artist and an educator. I've had 20 years' experience as a watershed curriculum teacher to students throughout Santa Cruz County as a spectra artist, teaching artist. I, because I live at the Tannery Arts Center, that's, I consider that one of my resources because we have almost 300 people on site. As an artist, I'm constantly speaking with lots of different people. Of my water history, I've worked with, I've spent many years in Watsonville. I've worked with the Watsonville Wetlands, the Watershed Council here, Ebb and Flow Festival, City of Watsonville Public Works and Utilities as a spectra teacher. These are the official agencies, but I've really done a lot of work independent. I've worked with the Paharo Art Gallery. We've put on shows to educate people about the Paharo River at the time. When I lived at Mount Madonna area, I managed us our small spring for our neighborhood, so I know something about the basic rural water. My students, as part of my curriculum, worked with the Watsonville City, and we'd go in, we'd test water, we'd draw pictures, we'd write poetry. We would do a lot of things that would relate to our environment. Part of my curriculum is having the kids do --
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you. And then lastly, Sierra. Sierra Ryan.
Hey. Good evening, council members. My name's Sierra Ryan. I'm here because I think I can bring a unique level of experience to the Water Commission. Through my current job, I collaborate with all of the local water agencies, and I'm familiar with pretty much every regional water supply and resource management program in the county. My work plan includes water conservation, groundwater recharge, stormwater management, surface water quality, conjunctive use of groundwater and surface water resources, and public outreach and education, including workshops and public meetings. I work with both the Santa Margarita and the Santa Cruz Mid-County Groundwater Sustainability Agencies. Water is my career. It's also my passion. It's what I studied in school, both grad school and college. And the local rivers are where I like to spend my time. I grew up in Santa Cruz. I plan to raise my daughter here. I plan to grow old here, and I will need water to do all of those things. I try to give back to the community where I think I can do the most good. I spent four years on the board of the Coastal Watershed Council, and then I took some time off to focus on my other passion, local history. And I researched and wrote a local history book, which has raised thousands of dollars for the Museum of Art and History Publications Committee and for which I won a NextE. I did take a year off recently of my volunteering time to have a baby, but now I'm back. I would love the honor of being able to volunteer my time with the Water Commission because I think the work that they do is vital. The climate is changing, and we need to be prepared for it. With my experience and my passion, I think I can help it to be successful.
All right. Thank you, Sierra.
Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes the opportunity for us to hear from our interested community members in serving on our commissions. I just want to say thank you. I sincerely thank you for taking the time out of your evening to be here, to share with us your perspective, and just for your overall interest in serving our community. You play a vital role. So I want to let you know that on January 22nd, we will be having a council meeting in which time we will be making recommendations for our appointments. So at this time, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.